...concerned and horrified by the videos that you see online. All of these people had lives that were meaningful and they all contributed to enrich our society. Trayford Pelleran of Lafayette, Louisiana; George Floyd of Minneapolis, Minnesota; Breonna Taylor of Louisville, Kentucky; Ahmed Aubrey of Brunswick, Georgia; Alton Sterling of Baton Rouge, Louisiana; Eric Gardner of Staten Island, New York; Tamir Rice of Cleveland, Ohio; and Tamir was 12 years old; Michael Brown of Ferguson, Missouri; Trayvon Martin of Sanford, Florida. These are just a few names from an ever-growing list of atrocities that we too often do nothing about. We too often hold nobody accountable. But as for here in our community, this is what I would like to see moving forward from the mayor president. At an absolute minimum, I expect you to offer your condolences to the family. Since you are man of God, I also expect you to pray with the family, to offer them some sort of relief during these moments of grief for them. That is a bare minimum requirement of you as a leader. Mr. Mayor President, you have fallen far too short of meeting that expectation. You offered the family no thoughts or prayers. You haven't spoken to the family. And when you were called out on the issue by the media, you apologized, but with the worst apology I've ever heard in my life. You said at an August 24th press conference, and this is a quote, "I did offer an apology for things that could have been handled differently, I suppose." I don't know. I'm literally speechless. My only thoughts can be, the only thoughts I can form is that you must do so much better than the half-hearted attempts you are currently making. From the parish council, I expect you to react to the needs of the community, to pass resolutions and ordinances when the community needs them, to oversee our local government and to step in when any department of that local government fails to meet the expectations of serving the public. All of these expectations are needed from you now. I call on you to pass a resolution, not an ordinance, just a resolution condemning the unnecessary killing of Trayford Pelleran by the Lafayette City Police Department, to request that the state completes their investigation as quickly as possible and that they release the body cam footage and the gas station security footage of the killing so the public can have a better understanding of what happened. I call on you to state in the resolution that this council offers its condolences to the grieving mother and to the whole family and friends of Trayford Pelleran. Finally, I call on you to state in this resolution that Trayford's body should be released to the family so they can bury him and try to seek closure. To everyone in Lafayette, I say, we will one day heal from this. It is my hope that when that day comes, Mr. Pelleran's death will not be made in vain and that strong positive meaningful change will be resulted from this horrible and unnecessary killing. Thank you for letting me speak and may God be with the mother, the family, and the friends of Trayford Pelleran. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Pete Falk, followed by Mindy Tobin.
It's two issues I need to address today. It's two issues I need to address today. The reason why I'm here, back in 2003, another council, I was here being recognized by the council for doing good work in the community. Now I'm here to address, address outrageous act of local government in the community. We feel that our mayor president is putting our life, our safety, our civil and human and unconstitutional rights in danger. And I have started a petition. I've started a petition to have him recalled because if he's not for the best interest of the city, no matter what part it is, minority, majority, no matter what part it is, us as registered voters elect him for the job to do, well, he has to go. He has to go. He has to go. If he can't speak with us and address issues in the city, he has to go. Never, never in this government history, we've had a mayor or a mayor president or parish president not, not speak to us, turn down our phone calls. And two, the Home Rule Charter. The city of Lafayette need to have his own, his own mayor speaking for him, not somebody speaking for the city and the parish. We need to have one man speaking for the city and one man speaking for the parish. Two different men, two different positions. We are a city. We are a city. The inner city of Lafayette is a city and we are a part of the city. We are not human beings. We are not animals. We are human beings. Why don't the parish want to give us a mayor? Why don't the parish, why don't the parish want to give us an elected chief? We the only city, the only town within the parish that doesn't have an elected chief of police. And if the mayor can't address the issues of the chief of police and ask him to give up his position, ask him to resign even though he's interim, well, then the mayor has to go. It starts within the government. It starts within the government and it starts with the Home Rule Charter. And if the parish council cannot approve a resolution to address the Home Rule Charter, I will hire a private CPA to investigate this government and see why we can't have our own mayor. And see why we can't have an elective chief. It's something behind the reason. It's something behind the reason. Because my city councilman, my city councilman brought up an ordinance in the city council to revisit the Home Rule Charter and the parish council declined. It's time to revisit the Home Rule Charter. It's time to revisit the Home Rule Charter. And if we can't feel safe in the community we pay taxes in, if we can't express our constitutional rights, and I'm not talking about rioting, I'm not talking about intimidating nobody, I'm talking about peacefully. If we can't do that without our government trying to put up an executive order to stop our constitutional rights, well, then our government has to go. And I will start a petition and I will be in here every, every time they have a meeting to talk about it. I will start a petition to remove every last government official out of office if we can't address the issue. Because this is a public health crisis. When a man is scared to walk out of his door because of the color of his skin, it's a public health crisis. We went there 60 years ago. We went there 60 years ago with Dr. King. Let's not go back to the past. It's bigger than black and white. It can't change overnight, but it starts here. It starts right now. We got to start somewhere. And it starts with the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mindy Tobin, followed by Rachel Foreman.
Okay, before that, I just want to make clarification. The parish council has no jurisdiction to do anything with the city. If the city of Lafayette wants an elected chief instead of appointed chief, that would have to come by 100% of the city council. Just to be clear, I understand about the Home Rule Charter. I understand what you're saying, but that has nothing to do with this parish council. If the city wants an elected chief, that has to go through the city council, through the administration. We don't oversee the city police. We don't do the salaries for the city police. We're a parish council that handles parish issues in regards to the sheriff, that we do courthouse, jailhouse. But in regards to an elected chief for the city of Lafayette, I understand. I've had other speakers that mentioned that. And if that's what you would like, then that has to go through the city of Lafayette, not the parish council. Just stating the facts, just, sir, I gave you five minutes. I thank you. And if you want a mayor, you got to go through the process. I'm just telling you, the parish council, who you're basically coming at, is not in charge of that. It's not our job, it's not our duty to do that. That would have to come from the city. So I just wanted to clarify and make sure that the facts are out there and that we're not just assuming things or throwing things out there. But I do appreciate your time and I understand your concern. And I think if you want to address that, I think you should address that with the city council. Okay? Thank you for your time, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. Council members, administration, Mayor President Josh Gilleri. Hi. I'm here tonight, first I'll introduce myself. My name is Mindy Tobin Dagel. I live in Nanette Cook's district and Mr. Gilleri's parish district. I feel honored to be here tonight. I feel honored to have the freedom and the liberty to speak what's on my mind and in my heart. I'm here tonight to tell Lafayette, we can do better than this. All of this, we can do better than this. We can do better than we have done. And if we can't, then we need to step aside and let somebody else who can do better, do better. I will say, there is a Buddhist mantra that says wisdom and compassion are indivisible. You cannot have wisdom if you do not have compassion and you do not display compassion without wisdom. Those two things are baked in together. They cannot be separated. What I want to know, one of my main questions here tonight is who wrote, maybe it's a rhetorical question, but who wrote the PR playbook that says to dehumanize and to criminalize somebody who has been killed at the hands of police? Whether they were completely in the wrong or whether it was completely unjust, but is that in our PR playbook in Lafayette today? Is that that we say, we don't first call Trayford Pelleran a son, a brother, a cousin, a nephew, but we call him the individual? And do we bring up his criminal record before his mother has even had a chance to touch her baby again? I don't know if you've ever had a mental health crisis. I don't know if that was what was going on, but I've had one. I have displayed some erratic behavior, maybe not in public, maybe in my driveway, something like that. A screaming match, a shouting match, something that happened that would make me look off. And that, but I've never worried about that causing my death at the hands of a policeman. Whoever wrote that playbook, well, let's just say that playbook needs to be burned and we should start over because we cannot do that again. That is what a lot of this has come from, has not, the event itself was a tragedy and the response to the event was a tragedy on top of a tragedy. Trayford Pelleran's death was a tragedy and what happened after his death was a tragedy on top of tragedy. And that was the dehumanization and criminalization of Trayford. Then the tragedy on top of that was the way that you, Mr. Gilleri, referred to Trayford Pelleran as the individual. I think at this point, you would probably take that back. But then the tragedy on top of that is bringing up his prior convictions, which were, to my knowledge, at that time, six years old. How did dehumanizing him and criminalizing him benefit Lafayette? It did not. My heart is heavy tonight because Trayford's mother's heart is broken beyond belief. I can't imagine going through that and then, when someone, all of you, in your official capacity, did not reach out to a mother in grief, that was the tragedy on top of the tragedy. We need to do better than that. We can do better than that. In medicine, there's an oath, first do no harm. As a city and as elected public officials, that would be a worthy endeavor, that when this happens, that when terrible things happen, and they do, and they will, and they will again, that first, we do no harm. I believe that Trayford Pelleran's mother, Michelle, was harmed by the way elected public officials handled, handled the event in the aftermath. I believe she was harmed. She deserves an apology for that. A sincere heartfelt apology and a commitment to do better. Take that playbook, throw it out. Let's start over. Let's start with wisdom and compassion, indivisible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Rachel Foreman, followed by Stephanie Skinner Touche. Okay, she'll pass. So following Ms. Foreman, it'll be Tangi Mutan.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I'm a psychotherapist in Lafayette. I'm in private practice. I've been in mental health for 20 years, I guess. And I really just wanted to kind of let you guys know about something that happened. It was probably about November when the Deux-Sans Chief of Police called me. He's a friend of my husband's and he knew what I did for a living. And he called and said that they had a, an interaction with a young girl in their, in their area who they knew had mental illness and she was in a really bad crisis. She was very psychotic. And they ended up having to pull their guns on her and they, they were able to de-escalate it, but it scared him because he just didn't want it to go there and just the thought of having to harm this girl was a lot for him. And he said he had called around and looked for de-escalation training specifically for that and couldn't find it. So he called me. So I did go ahead and put together a training and it's something that I'm, I'm pretty passionate about, not only being in mental health, but I also have a son. I adopted him as a baby. He was diagnosed with severe mental illness at five. He's now 18. He's also a six foot one, 320 pound black boy. And we've already had instances where we called the police for assistance and we ended up with guns drawn on him in our home. So I really took this very seriously. I did go out and do the training. Chief Judy said, you know, he thought it went really well. He took the, the guys, they practiced it, they went and did some simulations and he thought it was very helpful. So I then reached out to the sheriff's department and told them what had happened. I also did that with the police department and that I was, you know, I'd already put this together, that Kib could vouch for it, that it was a good training. And I offered to come in and do it anytime they wanted for their officers at no charge. And I was told, thank you, but we don't need it. I find that hard to believe, especially now. There was a lady there in particular I was supposed to speak to. I did speak with her in person, Ms. Perkins. She told me, no, I'm the one who does this training. I know we have what we need. And I was telling her, you know, I went to school for six years for this, then it took three more to get a license. And I have to do 20 hours of CEUs every year just to keep this license. It's not something you learn once. What about doing continuing education hours? And basically she just said, no, we're good. And when I mentioned, you know, I'm, I'm really invested in this where, you know, I have a son with mental illness who also happens to be a black male. And she made the weirdest comment. She said, well, what does that have to do with anything? And I said, it has a lot to do with, with things, you know, there, there is a definite difference in the, you know, the way the interactions go sometimes. And she argued me to the ground that that was not true, which just told me again how out of touch they really are with what's going on. I don't care if they get the training from me. I don't care who they get it from, but it needs to happen. And I don't understand why, why they're not out looking for it. But even so, when somebody comes up and says, hey, let me do this for you, I don't know if it was an ego thing or what, but I don't get it. I don't know if you guys can answer to that, but, and I don't know if it would have helped. I don't know if I had been there or if I had trained them, if Trayford Pelleran would be alive, but they don't know that either. You know, I mean, if it saves one person, what did it cost them? I just, I don't get it. I, I don't, I don't know where the priorities were there. And I just think people should know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time. Next speaker?
I'm sorry, I'm not really good with public speaking, but I do have a few issues that we have in the low income neighborhoods. I'm from the north side. I grew up in a neighborhood called McComb. And we have a lot of people with mental health disorders and issues there. And we lack of a lot of resources like community policing. And I feel like if we had more of that, Trayford would still be alive. We need police officers to go in these neighborhoods and get to know these people with mental health issues. So whenever y'all get a call or complaint, you know how to handle it. So another person doesn't get accidentally shot or killed. You'll know how to handle that issue in that, in that situation. So we need community policing in the low income areas. I don't understand why we don't have it. I've been living on the north side my whole life. Only time a police officer came to talk to me or get to know me is about a crime. And that's traumatizing as a kid. Nobody has ever came up to me or tried to get to know my family just because we're from the north side and we, we're in a community where people is really, you know, drugged, influenced. And I feel like we lack those resources. We need community policing so they can know how to handle situations like what happened with Trayford.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Stephanie Skinner Touche. She did decide to speak. And the next speaker after her is Jennifer Thorpe Randle.
Hi, everybody. I like it. I didn't know about this terrible tragedy and I'm, I'm very, very sorry to the mother of this child and it's terrible and I think it's excessive that he was shot that many times and God bless everybody and their family. But what I came here to say, I came to talk about the police actually, is that I don't want the policemen in our schools. I don't like to see the police in our high schools because there's already cameras on us everywhere, you know, and our kids, they don't do anything wrong. So I don't believe that police should be in the schools at all because our, our kids, you know, just don't do anything wrong. And then another thing that's being brought up here tonight is the Constitution. Well, the Constitution, that's very important, council, please let people protest peacefully. If you're rioting or tear down a statue or something, you need to go to jail. You know what I'm saying? But a peaceful protest is constitutional, let people do that. And I do believe the council should immediately reach out to this mother and to this family. I mean, please, people, because that, that's a terrible tragedy that I didn't know about. And for everyone who knew him, I'm very sorry that that happened, but you uphold an oath, all of you, to the Constitution and supporting that we live by that because that affects our children. We don't want a tyrannical government and we don't want to turn into China or any of that. We have freedoms in this country and so we want to treasure those and, you know, keep those sacred. And, um, because there's a right to peaceful protests and all that. And I do believe in a little girl, Ms. Tangi, who spoke before me, I think it's very important for the police to go into communities and get to know people. And we have to remember that not all our policemen are bad and they could save our lives one day. They get calls, they don't get paid a lot, you know, I'm not, there's some bad police, but in every occupation, in every government, from police to pastors and, you know, there's all kinds of, there's bad, there's bad people and there's bad situations, but all our police aren't bad and they can save our lives. So it's important not to defund the police because you hear a lot about that in the nation. Well, you know, defund the police? No. You know, I love the police and most of our police are good. There might be a few bad ones, but these officers, they really need to be punished. And get the footage out there to people and get the footage out to the parents. And, and we're tired of, and police, we have to remember they don't get paid a lot and that doesn't give them the right to act tyrannical and not go with their training and use excessive force and murder people of any color. Because I don't even like talking about the colors that we are. That's so sad in this country. We're in America, the most freest country in the entire world. And we're, we're talking about skin color and racism and all these things and it's disturbing. It really is because we shouldn't be divided like that. And a lot of sinister people like to pit us against each other, you know, blacks against whites or homosexuals against, you know, heterosexuals. And they try to divide us in all this. So we really can't let them do that psyop on us. You know, we have to come together as a community and that's a good thing. And there's just so much to talk about and my heart's with everybody and I want us to all to come together in Lafayette and follow the Constitution and love and be real Christians and fight against any kind of United Nations or tyrannical takeover of our country. And I do want the police to go to different communities rather than have these cameras on every street corner. I don't like the cameras. The only eyes who need on us are God. All these government cameras everywhere is like the zoo animals are more free than we are. There's cameras on us everywhere, people, and that's disturbing. But that's all I have to say tonight. God bless you all.
Next speaker is Jennifer Thorpe Randle.
Next speaker?
Jennifer Thorpe Randle, followed by Matthew Humphrey.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Randle Thorpe. Mayor President Gilleri, distinguished members of the council. I'm from District Five, Abraham Rubens, Abraham Rubens District and Councilman Lazard. What I'm going to read to you is a press release for immediate release. Mental health professionals might have prevented a recent tragedy, advocates say. Lafayette, Louisiana, September 1st, 2020. The recent Lafayette, Louisiana, police shooting of 31-year-old Trayford Pelleran, a black man who was coping with mental health issues, has sparked a demand by local peer advocates to involve mental health professionals in responding to such calls. According to eyewitness accounts, the victim was tasered three times, then police shot him 11 times. He was taken to a local hospital where he died. A trained individual might have used de-escalation techniques to defuse the situation. A statewide organization of individuals, and I am a person who lives with a mental health condition. Instead, lawyers for the family have said that Mr. Pelleran was followed on foot for close to half a mile with zero de-escalation measures taken during that time. According to the New York Times, the family also contends that race influenced the violent response from officers compared Mr. Pelleran's situation to a recent episode in which a white man driving a stolen vehicle was arrested after a police chase, the Times noted. Last month, representatives of Meaningful Minds of Louisiana, the organization for which I am the chief executive officer, met with Lafayette Mayor President Josh Gilleri before the incident as he declared July National before the incident as he declared July National Minority Mental Health Care Month in Lafayette. When we explained to him how mental health professionals could collaborate in law enforcement on mental health calls, Mayor Gilroy expressed interest and suggested that a cabinet member follow up on it. There are models for this kind of collaborative approach, such as CAHOOTS, spelled C-A-H-O-O-T-S, that is used in Eugene, Oregon. The mayor has since come under fire for his initial reaction to the shooting. He subsequently apologized and offered condolences to the victim's family and to the African-American community. Louisiana State Police, who have taken over the investigation, said Pelleran was calving a knife, but it has yet to be determined if deadly force was necessary. Meanwhile, the family only wants justice for the death of their loved one. The Lafayette, Louisiana, community grieves with the loss of a young man's life. Unfortunately, that began a protest peacefully after that, the day after the shooting ended. And Lafayette Parish deputies used smoke flash and bang explosives at marchers who blocked Evangelion Theway following a vigil for Pelleran. Peaceful protest is our constitutional right, but when our rights are violated, that is unlawful. This tragedy happened on August 21st, but the bitterness that has gotten us to this point took root long ago. Effecting meaningful change will require that we join hands together with city officials, legislators, and police. It is time for the Peer Movement for Social Justice to rise up in Louisiana. My name again is Jennifer Randall Thorpe. You may contact me at 337-781-3654. Meaningful Minds of Louisiana Incorporated. I'd also like to thank Rachel Foreman, who was before me, Susan Rogers, and Daniel Fisher, National Coalition of Mental Health Recovery. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Thorpe, I apologize for mispronouncing your name, transposing the name.
That's okay, darling. That's okay.
Thank you for your time, ma'am. I wasn't meant to.
Next speaker is Matthew Humphrey, followed by Kalief Cormier.
Good evening. My comments won't be very long, so I'm going to wait until the mayor president sits back down.
You can take your mask. You can remove your mask if you talk better.
Thank you. Hey, Josh. Gentlemen, I think you'll be very happy to hear, uh, Councilman Nakka, that my comments are going to be very brief. You know, I typically write them out because I don't like to shoot from the hip. I always worry that I'm going to say something that I don't mean. But I mean every single word that's going to come out of my mouth this time, so I didn't write it down. Happy anniversary. As it turns out, my Facebook memory showed me that a year ago today was the first time I was ever critical of you on Facebook, probably right around the time that you blocked me. And I'm going to read some of your posts that I was critical about. It is my understanding was what I was critical about. I said, and I said it was irresponsible that we have a candidate for office hedging his bets. This was about the, uh, the 10% pay raise that the council had voted on that you weren't going to take. And you, and you commented that we're at an all-time low with trust between our local government and our people. It's been a year. I would say that the trust between local government and people is non-existent and that is entirely on you. Given the climate following George Floyd's murder, I would expect more from the Lafayette that I know and love and that you claim to know and love than the way that it's been handled by you. Not, you know, Sidra who sends out emails to volunteer organizations, Jamie who drafts speeches, your chief of minority affairs that doesn't have affairs with minorities, your, your last-minute Friday night speeches, closing down rec centers like you're ignorant that they're in the black part of the city. You didn't even talk to Carlos about it, but then you're going to make that man come out and, and talk about it and do damage control? It's ridiculous. All of this damages you and this isn't the Lafayette that I love. This isn't who we are and I don't think you are who we are. And so I would like for you to resign. And if you won't resign, I will be leading a recall against you. Good night.
Next speaker is Kalief Cormier, followed by Clyde Simeon.
You can remove your mask, sir, if it's easier for you to talk. You can talk right there, sir. You have all pledged for liberty and justice for all. That is something that all American citizens do. So I, I find it complexing that we're standing out protesting for justice for Trayford Pelleran. And there are people in our city who have comments that, that are asking for people to stop doing so, that are questioning why we're doing so. We're not here standing against anyone in our city. We're wondering why the people of our city are not standing with us. You as a person, not your position, you as a person should be asking yourself, why is it that I'm able to pledge allegiance to this flag and to the republic for which it stands? One nation under God, indivisible, but here we are divided. That can't be. We're out, I'm wearing a shirt today that says, "No justice, no peace." You hear it chanted when people are out protesting. That's because without justice, there should be no peace. The same way Trayford's mom is sitting there crying every night, you should not have peace either. That's why I'm standing here so emotional today because I have no peace. My peace has been stripped. When an innocent man is killed, which until someone sees their day in court, that is an innocent man, no matter if he had a knife, no matter if he had a gun, no matter what occurred. The reason why we have people, the, the rap sheets and we show criminal history after is to try to justify. We're not asking for justification. We're asking for justice. And until there's justice, there should be no peace. Not for your neighbor, not for your friend, not for your family member, not for your worst enemy. There should be no peace. You shouldn't have peace. You shouldn't be able to sit here and look at me so peacefully. I see concern whenever there's people walking around here wondering what they're doing. That should be the concern, that you're looking at your mayor, wondering what it is that he's doing. There's, uh, something that's been brought up. Why is there no community policing? Well, there is, for the community that these police represent. The reason why you don't see them walking on that side is because that's not the community they represent. We have an American dream for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That's not the American dream. Dr. King's dream was the American dream, to see us all walking together. Pursuit of happiness here is pursuit of the comfort that you see for those that are sitting at their computer, typing on KTC3 from their homes of River Ranch. That's where everyone wants to be. That's where the police want to be. That's where they want to protect. That's where you want to protect right now. That's what it is. It wasn't a mistake, the things that you said. It was intentional. That was with intent. And you would want to intentionally start doing things different, oh, we're going to intentionally take a stand and we're going to start walking different in this city. And that's a fact. And it will not stop. When you know as a lawyer that once the court hears something that is not permissible in court, the jury has been tainted, there's nothing you can say to stop what they have already heard. It's too late. That's how I feel right now. It's too late. You've already showed. Everyone who is silent has already showed. So we're not asking for you to say something that is going to take back what you've done. We need to speak with someone new about how we're going to change going forward because it's too late for that. The city knows. There's a, a concept in psychology. It's called the Dunning Kruger effect. It's a cognitive bias. And it's when people who have a task overestimate their ability to do that task when they actually have a low ability of doing it. It's when you have such an ignorance, such ignorance and such an inability to do something that you can't even grasp, that you can't do it. It's, it's not until you start to, to gain some knowledge that you see that you have no knowledge at all. That's what's happening. The people who are leading our city, the people who are leading our country, the people who are leading our state, they have no grasp of what's going on on one side of our city. They have no understanding of what it's like to be black in America, and that I understand. But they have no desire to learn what it is that the people are going through. How can you lead a people that you have no desire to lead? And once you start to gain some of that knowledge, once you start reaching out and stepping from behind that computer and, and speak up to your neighbors, speak up to the person that's sitting next to you, speak to yourself in the mirror, once you do that, then you'll see that you have no knowledge at all. And that these people are hurting, you should be that person that's hurting. You shouldn't be able to sleep, the same way that mother can't sleep. Because I'm losing sleep, but my children won't lose sleep. And I'll stay up until I can assure, I won't rest until I know that my children can.
Next speaker.
Clyde Simeon, followed by Jackie Lau.
Hello, I'm Clyde Simeon, one of the founders and leaders of the village in Lafayette. So I'm hearing a lot of talking. Uh, I heard that there's been a lot of talking going on. I heard a lot of talking yesterday. From the last two weeks, I can, you know, just my personal experience. I know that, uh, talking doesn't give results. Actions do. And I also know that when action isn't taken and when stalling happens, it's because I'm usually in the wrong. So, uh, and I think it's evident also that, uh, action shows results because I'm not, you know, I've never came to one of these things before, but I don't know if this is the usual attendance. I don't know if this is the usual energy that's in here. So I think that's, uh, an evident fact. But, uh, until action is taken, there's not going to be any change. And I just want to, uh, restate and make clear that, uh, from the voice of the protesters, it's coming with, from a place of good intent and love and peacefulness, not chaos and destruction or anything like that. So just ask yourselves what place are y'all, you know, making decisions from. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jackie Lau.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight as a Caucasian, a Western European heritage, the great, great, great granddaughter of Scottish slave owners. I stand with my fellow citizens in opposition to the awful events of the last several weeks. Over the past three decades, I have brought artists of color to the stage of the Hyman Center and out into our community. These talented people always ask about racism and race relations here. My reply has always been, we have the nicest racism. It's so pretty. It's so polite. I then explain how divided our community is. And now everyone has seen it. It's not nice and it's not pretty. It's ugly. If you haven't seen this by now, let me just tell you what it's been like for the past 30 years when I've brought artists of color to Lafayette. We're not buying season tickets this year. We have, you have too many black artists. I don't like dance and I especially don't like to watch black people dance. We're going to pass on sponsorship this year. You have too many black artists. It's the media that's causing all this uproar over race. You don't really think we have a race problem here? "I'm not going to the 20th anniversary performance," said a board member. "I don't want to see Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater again." There's a black guy at your house. The Congo has arts? I thought they only threw spears. You can't sell a house for that price in that neighborhood? We did. These comments were made by my neighbors, your elected officials, my colleagues, the people who lead the businesses you support, other community leaders. I have stated them with quotation marks as this appeared on Facebook. You can't see them here. Because these are some of the actual words that have been spoken to me. I have not attributed statements to the people because it's not particularly fair at this time. And there is one example that I can't even include. It is so unspeakable. If you recognize your own words, if you're listening, I only regret that I did not act then and call you out. On my side of the conversation, I've had missteps too. Of course, we all do. I study, I ask, I learn, I stumble. I study, I ask, I learn, I stumble. You can too. In these dark days, I tell you, we have a storm brewing that is worse than two Katrina's combined. I am sorry that our mayor has elected to torch our community with uninformed leadership that is provoking and stoking unrest that will either move us forward or cut hope for the future from under our collective feet. If you do not understand the gravity of where we are today, please let me know. I will be happy to direct you to information that might be helpful. If you don't like what you've heard, do not bother to comment. That's what your timeline and your forum is for.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Next speaker is Jacques Miller. Mr. Miller, you may begin speaking.
Good evening. This is Jacques Miller from Paris District Four, which would be Mr. Gilroy's district. I'm calling tonight with some concerns about the way things have been going lately in the parish. On the 22nd of August, our mayor president referred to Trayford Pelleran as an individual and assured us that he would not be distracted. Then there's the 20th, the executive proclamation of the 28th. I'm sorry, but the only way, only way I can read that is to curb protesting. And then, and then there was a press conference on the 29th where we were assured that everything is under control, but yet at the same time, there was an email going out telling pastors that things are not under control. And then, because of all of that, we make news in the Washington Post, but not for positive, uh, reasons. And as a person of mental health issues myself, I would like to close by recognizing people's entirely behavioral health, which keeps most of us sane. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we did have four citizens who signed in, who came in, um, after the reading of the item and after the auditorium had been cleared of the employees. Mr. Jacques Miller was the final speaker.
Okay. Thank you. That completes comments from the public. At this time, we'll move to resolution. This is a public hearing speaker. And speaker forums are available for anyone wishing to address the council, the five-minute rule does apply.
I'm trying to form to speak on this comment and I don't understand why. And I was actually told to come in by this deputy gentleman over here.
Ma'am.
Yes, yes, yeah, hi. It's me, Leslie Malosom. I sent you an email that you never responded to, bro. I sent all y'all emails. I'm feeling out of form.
Okay, all right. Ms. Williams, did you get that forum?
I was told to come in here that I could speak on this.
Yes, I did get four forms that were, um, that's the four individuals that I spoke of. It's up to you.
Yeah, I, I had told you, yes.
No, we, we, you, you approved four before, but these came in after, so.
How, how late after?
About number 10 or 11 speaker.
How, how many besides Ms. Malosom? How many?
Four.
Four more?
Four.
Okay. All right, let him speak.
You want to call? Okay, um, Leslie LeBlanc. And then she will be followed by Jai Pelleran. And for those listening, we do have, uh, it's, it's on the forum, whereas if you come in after the reading of the item and speakers have stored it, um, they, we don't allow or the chair does not allow, uh, public comment following that. So that's why I have to give him the, the items that relate. So he's allowing them.
So, so, so I'm not so bad after all. See, I could have just said no, but I, I want to make sure that, you know, you get a chance to speak.
That the citizens who pay, you get to say what they have to say. Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Ma'am.
Thank, thank you.
Please, please wash the tone, okay? I allowed you to speak. I have the privilege to cut it and go to the next resolution.
Okay.
So we can, we can be professional.
I'm very professional.
And we can be polite.
Are we going to be as professional as your police officers were? Are we going to be as professional as your police officers were? Or we, because that was the email, you can start my time, because I'm going to start talking right now, Kevin. Did y'all see that email I sent you this morning? Did you? Did you watch the video?
You started her clock?
Oh yeah, started, it's cool, thank you. Did y'all watch that? Was that appropriate? That was the fourth night I had been out there. I'm a taxpaying business owner. I'm a parent. I'm an educator. Y'all know the video I'm talking about, so don't play like y'all don't. That was the fourth night I had been out there. One of the nights I was out there, I even brought my kids. We ate gelato. And your chief of police, and I say your, because you are the one that appointed him, Josh, thought it proper to initiate aggressive police action on a group of peaceful protesters. They never attempted to approach me, not on any of the nights I was out there. And I made no, I didn't hide who I was, okay? I wear these same boots every damn time I'm out there, because I don't hide who I am. Who else you know has these boots like this? If you police officers can't look at me and say, oh, that's the same girl from the other night, look at her boots, then they suck at their jobs, like that's just what's up, kind of like you. Because that's how I feel about you right now. And you will talk to us. But you know what? You try to paint us as violent, and that's what makes me so mad about it, is that your police chief tried to make it appear as though there was a clash, and there wasn't. The only reason that clash happened was because of him and the decisions that he made. You said you were on the phone with him during that entire time, what'd you tell him, huh? You don't have to answer that now, because I know you're not going to answer it anyway. It's going to be like your little town hall meetings, where you pretend to answer the question, and you dance around the subject. We ain't going away. And we don't want violence, we want legislative change. And there will be citizen review boards, and there will be an end to qualified immunity. There's not going to be any more of this crap where police officers get to take the money that they seize from people and utilize it to buy these fricking weapons of war. There will not. We don't want violence. We want change. And I will not allow you to paint me in any other light. Y'all fucking sad. And I will not wash my fucking mouth. Jai Pelleran, followed by Alicia Roberts.
Yeah, that's real classy, and that's real peaceful protesting. You have people that watch this meeting.
I want to sound peaceful.
Get out of here.
What's illegal about saying word fuck? Can someone tell me what's illegal about saying word fuck?
That's not very professional, ma'am.
Can someone tell me what's illegal about saying word fuck?
Thank you, have a good evening. Thank you. Next speaker. I'm just going to stay direct, and I'm not going to tolerate this in this meeting. It happens again, you're gone. This is not professional, this is not what Lafayette's about, regardless of what side of the situation you're on, you either hold yourself and be responsible or respectful, or you can get out. Okay? I am not a rude person, I'm not a racist, but I demand respect, and I demand that we come together and you speak professionally. Vulgar language, ugly statements, it's not going to happen as Kevin Naquin's the chairman. You got people that watch this meeting, you got children at home, my kids are watching, this is not what we're about. Got a problem with it, don't make your comment. If you out of line, you're out. Thank you. Next speaker.
Y'all do not know me. My name is Jai Pelleran. Trey was my little cousin. I don't want to tell you how things are going out here, we all kind of know it's not exactly how we would want it to be. I can only tell you what it feels like, and I think we all can understand what that's like, because we all still have a breath. We're all human. I've served this country in the US Navy, got out, master's degree, did all my stuff so I can do better for my family, as we all sit here and want to do for our families. We want to create something and a life that's good and happy and joyful. And I want to tell you about what Trey did for me. I met my little cousin for the first time when he was five years old, and he thought I was the coolest thing in the world. I'm 35, he's four years younger than me, and we would sit there on the north side in his grandma's house, and we would play Sega. Not his, it's the one I brought. But we would sit there, and we would laugh, and we'd chase the chickens in the backyard. And we'd sit there and pull little crawdads out and play with them on the table till they were time to go into the pot. And I wanted to share this with, and he reached out to me a month before he was shot and killed, with hopes he could come visit me, hopes he could see a bigger, brighter world, because the world he was living in wasn't supporting him in the way that he needed. Not only with his mental health, not only with fear of walking in the streets, but because he was scared. What you saw in that video with him walking away was a scared man. He was scared for his life. And it didn't really matter, because it was taken anyway. So now this is no longer his worry, this is ours. I feel it, I feel it now. I feel it when I walk up to, up here. I mean, I, all, I haven't, like I said, I don't know how things are running, but that's a lot of cops for a public, peaceful meeting, a respectable meeting. Like, I've been doing documentaries about the protests since they started with Floyd, started in March. I've been traveling the country, I've been marching, I've been supporting. I'm not anti-police, but I'm pro-justice. If I were to shoot somebody while I was active duty in wartime scenario, and I wasn't supposed to pull that trigger, I'd go to jail. If this isn't even a wartime scenario, and the trigger was pulled enough times to fill up a body with 11 bullets, and there's still no justice, his body still hasn't been seen by our family. But like, maybe I'm missing something, because this isn't what I signed up for. This isn't what I signed to protect this country for. This isn't, this isn't how it's supposed to be. I'm not sure if I learned, went to the wrong civics classes, or maybe I got the wrong degree and don't understand enough, but it just doesn't seem right. Now, as a father, and as a cousin, and as a son, and as a brother, I hope you can feel the same way in some way. You have children. Do you, sir? 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 What if you were me right now? And it was nothing you can do, and I'm not even speaking for his father or his mother. This is me as the cousin who's doing my own thing. I just, I'm just really sad. It's really saddening. I hope, I hope as elected officials that this can appeal to your humanity. Because I think that's what really is needed right now. No one wants to fight. We all really do want peace. There's enough stuff going on around in the world. We got COVID, you got hurricanes, there's fires burning in California, you know, we don't know what the heck's going to happen with this election. People are all scared. Let's cancel that fear and try to find our humanity. Just try to support a little more. Might work. It's a different route. It's an option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, for the first time in my life, I am almost at a loss for words. I usually prepare really well for these, either here at the school board, because I work in a data-driven field, and I like to have stats and statistics and numbers and sources that I can cite and everything. I'm tired. I am unbelievably exhausted with everything that is going on. To come into here, and first of all, I just want to say, civility is relative. When you're dealing with the things that we're dealing with, civility is relative. When we have people being shot in the street, civility is relative. I work with a vulnerable population. Most of them are nonverbal. And a lot of them are in, a population that will get them in trouble, unfortunately. And we are too worried about knee-jerk reactions than doing the right thing. I'm sure you all know that in the state of Louisiana, you have to have a license to arrange flowers. Arrange flowers! I have to go take a class, that's not what I do for a living, but if I wanted to, I'd have to go take a class, an intern with somebody, and then sit and take a state license board exam for it, to be a florist. But police officers are not held to that kind of standard. For the job that I do have, I have to have national certification, I have to have certification through insurance companies, I have to have state licensing, and I have to get CEUs every year. Plus, there's a database, and there are state agencies that can audit my work. Where is that for police officers? Why is that not something that, we as supposedly a progressive community, why aren't we working for that? Why aren't we saying, you know what, we're going to make a change in policing, and we are going to require a certain level of education and a certain level of accountability for our officers? When Mr. Khalif was speaking, he reminded me of one of my favorite Bible verses. And while I realize that Christianity is a hot topic, because unfortunately, we have a lot of folk faithful that like to use the Bible as a bludgeon, I'd like to remind you of Corinthians 1, 1 Corinthians 1226, "If one member suffers, all the members suffer." So every single one of you sitting on this board, and the ones that aren't here tonight, should be suffering like Trey Ford's mother is. You should be suffering like his cousin is, because one of yours, a part of our community, has fallen. One of yours was taken in a way that was unnecessary. And the fact that, in the midst of all of this, when people try to do things creatively to get your attention, you shut it down. And I will be honest with you, the fact is, the only reason you're sitting in that chair is because Carly did not have a dick.
Ma'am, I just threw somebody out for cursing. Can you please don't say that? I'm asking you, please, that was uncalled for.
I'm sorry, is this comfortable to you?
The truth is, thank you. I, you know, and you wonder why this country and this world is what it is. Listen, you can't, you can't, you can't do that. You cannot do that. I'm just saying, it's disrespectful, and it's not right, okay? I'm, I'm just saying it's not right. Mr. A.B. Rubin's sitting here taking a deep, we all like just, that is just not the right thing to do. His daughter's watching, okay? Let's, it's, Mr. Rubin, you want to say something?
I'm, I'm, I'm way to the, I'm way to the last one.
Yeah, you have one speaker left.
I appreciate it, I just, look, we, we can be on different sides, or we can agree, but we, we can't lose sight of what you were taught as a kid. Respect others, treat others how you want to be treated. The comment was just totally uncalled for Carly Amberbar and for people that are watching. And whether you agree or disagree, I'm sorry, but that's not the way you handle business, okay? Thank you. Please come up and be respectful, talk with emotion, talk with heart, say what you have to say. Let's just not use vulgar language. Thank you.
Final speaker, Marquette Askew.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Williams, I'd like the name of the speaker that was taken out, and the name of the speaker that just came here, and note for the record that any public comment, that I'd like to see if, if they could be warned ahead of time, but if it continues of vulgar language, then I would like to make sure that there can give our, they can give their five minutes in writing and send an email, but I, I'm not going to let the cussing and the, and the stuff continue to go on. And then maybe we can get people to be more respectful when they come in and talk. Other than that, I don't want those two speakers here. Everyone else has done a great job, and I appreciate it. Councilman Rubin, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm disappointed right now in the two people that spoke and we had to ask to escort Actually puts a lump in my throat to know that we have come to that. I too am very emotional at this particular time. Trey Ford wasn't just a name for me. I want y'all to understand that. His dad, his dad and his mom are friends of mine. And I'm not going to come out here and start cursing either, you know? I would like Trey Ford's name to be remembered as a situation that caused change in our community. Okay, I would like for Trey Ford's name to be remembered as a reason that change has happened in our community. I would like, Ms. Foreman spoke about mental illness, and I've mentioned this to the mayor president, I would like for the police department to have de-escalation and mental illness training done at least twice a year. So that way, they know how to deal with people that looks like me and who aren't mentally well. And I would also like to have the police department to have psych evaluation done at least once a year. We have a lot of people coming out, the military have PTSD and other mental issues. We have the young man who had his lunch taken from him while in high school, who now becomes a cop and think he's Billy Badbooty. That was good?
That was a good one. That was, that was a good one.
I'm sorry, y'all knew me, I got to put, I'm sorry.
You're good, councilman.
I'm dealing with it. Okay, anyway.
You're good, both.
But that's why we need to have psych evaluation, the de-escalation training twice a year. And as Ms. Foreman mentioned earlier, we need to have some mental training of all of these things. And I gave a scenario yesterday, and I'm going to briefly mention it again. I have a family member had a diabetic attack, called an ambulance, they can't come until a cop come. Cop came there, saw the man acting very erratic, and drew the gun on him. If his friend wouldn't have been there and told him, hey, something's wrong with him. And then the ambulance came and said, hey, he looked like he's having a sugar problem. Then they hit him with some medicine for his sugar, and he was okay. If his friend and the ambulance wouldn't have been there, he might have been gone today. That's why we need these de-escalation classes and know how to deal with mental illness people. I was going to say this with the joint meeting, because I know we can't make any calls on this, but I know that the city council is watching right now, and I'm, I'm begging them right now. And I want to say this now because of the situation that we had right now, I wasn't going to say anything in this meeting. But I'm begging the city council right now, as you listen, please, please, implement these movements so that we, when people walk out of their house, they're not afraid, just because of the color of their skin or they have a mental illness. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilman Rubin, appreciate you. Is that all the speakers? Just want to be clear, we good?
Yes.
Okay.
No more speakers.
All right. Let's now move to the resolution. This is a public hearing, speaker forums are available for anyone wishing to address the counsel. There is a five-minute rule that applies. Cindy, can you please read?
Parish Resolution 122020, a resolution of the Lafayette Parish Council approving the action taken by Lafayette Economic Development Authority. Board of Commissioners authorizing the tax assessor and tax collector for the parish of Lafayette to assess and collect property taxes at the 2020 millage rate of 1.8 mils for the Lafayette Economic Development Authority. Be it resolved by the Lafayette Parish Council that whereas a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Lafayette Economic Development Authority was held on August 20th, 2020, to consider a resolution and whereas the board approved the millage rate of the Lafayette Economic Development Authority of 1.8 mils on a dollar amount, on a dollar of property subject to taxation situated in a district, which includes all of the parish of Lafayette, Louisiana, as authorized by law for the year 2020. And whereas, the Lafayette Parish Assessor has completed the 2020 reassessment of taxable properties of Lafayette Parish. And whereas, based on the outcome of the reassessment, there are decreases in net taxable values in Lafayette Parish. Now therefore be further resolved by the Lafayette Parish Council that Section 1, all of the aforementioned rarest clauses are adopted as support of this resolution. Section 2, in a public hearing held on September 1st, 2020, the council approves the millage rate as adopted by the leaderboard as follows. Lafayette Economic Development Authority, 1.8 mils. Section 3, the proper administrative officers of the parish of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, be and they, are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes as herein above set forth upon the reassessment role of said parish for the year 2020, and to make the collection of the taxes imposed for and on behalf of the tax authority according to law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all property subject to taxation as herein set forth, and collection thereof shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law. Section 4, all resolutions or ports thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed. This resolution having been submitted to a vote, the results were as follows. And the resolution was declared adopted on this, the first day, September 2020.
And by law, those millage resol, millage ordinances and resolutions have to be read in full.
Okay, I was about to say, you did a good job, and I didn't know. I'm looking at my page, I'm thinking it's supposed to end in a paragraph, and you kept reading them like you're reading a novel, but it's all good.
Usually we just read the title, which is up there, but these are millages, and we have to read them in full.
Totally understand. I need a motion and a second to consider. Got a motion by Councilman Carlson, second by Councilman Tabor, council discussion. Councilman Tabor, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring an amendment to this, to bring it back down to the 1.68. I spoke with Mr. Grotro, and he's just aware of all the headaches that he's, and I'm sure most of the public's aware of his pay raise and his pay, and I, you know, and a few of us talked with him about it, and just asked, you know, if he can just make the cut, just like, I come up with $261,000 in cuts, and he agreed, so he asked me to bring this amendment to it, and to bring it back down to where it's at now, and...
So we have an amendment on the floor to reduce it back to the original amount of 1.6? 1.68? Okay. I need a second for that amendment to be considered, and then have discussion. Second by Councilman A.B. Rubin, and any other comment?
No, I just, I just want to, you know, we spoke with him, and one of the things was his pay raise, his pay, and he actually agreed to take a cut, so I'm sure a lot of people are going to be happy with that. And, you know, it's, it's, like I said, he's going to bring it back into what he needs to do to get it to the 1.68.
Okay, appreciate it. And the other thing too about Lita, it's, a lot of people are probably not aware of what they do and the impact they have in bringing businesses and reaching out to help create some economy and some development, so they do a fine job over there. I know they have continued to work with trying to attract businesses in the unincorporated area to help us out with tax revenue, and I want to thank the board and the president of Lita for working with the parish council and understanding the situation we're in, and working with us and allowing us to, to go back to the original without having to come up on this. So appreciate you, Lita, and thank you, Greg Grotro, for the call today, and for your board working together for this council. We do appreciate it. Councilman Tabor?
I do want to add that he was supposed to give us all a seminar basically on, because I told him, I said, "I want to know more about it," but with COVID coming, we couldn't, we couldn't do that, so I said, you know, "I think we're out of that COVID stage where we can meet." I said, "I want to, I want to know what's going." As a businessman, I live by return on investment, and I want to get into it and see if I can, if we make sure that we get that return on investment, and make sure it's worth everything we give. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Carlson, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to echo your sentiments and really thank Mr. Grotro and the leaderboard for working with us and considering keeping their millage rate where it currently is. I know this means that they take a little bit of a hit, but they also understand the current economic situation that we're in, what our business is, and every household is facing, and so I certainly appreciate their willingness to do that as well.
Thank you, sir. Any public comment?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Felton Eaton.